All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the special meeting for the North Branford Planning and Zoning Commission for Thursday, April 14th. To order. In attendance are regulars member Mace, Val Denzey, De Francisco, and Dulac. Our first order of business are the meeting minutes from April 2nd. So, if you haven't had a chance to look at them, please do. If anybody, if somebody's good with them and you want to make a motion to approve them, please do. Uh, let me make sure, uh, who's here? Let me just make sure.
Those are the April 2nd minutes, correct?
Correct.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the April 2nd minutes.
Hey, hang on a second, hang on a second. Carrie, the minutes that were attached, uh, we had, okay, never mind. My ear, Alex. Go ahead.
I second.
Okay. So I, I made the motion, Trish seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes four to zero.
So just a quick reminder, um, before you make any motion, or when you make any motions tonight, just state your name, too, just in case someone's not sure, or participating via phone and they can't see.
Yeah, and when we vote, too, we should, we should, uh, do almost like a roll call.
Right. Bill, in case you're wondering, you're muted. So we technically don't know how, oh, there you go, now you're unmuted. I was gonna say we technically...
Sorry to interrupt, I don't know if anyone can hear.
Now we can hear you.
Still driving, so I'm having technical, I can see everyone, but I can barely...
Sorry.
So login.
All right, Bill, did you, did you vote to approve the, um, minutes?
Technically, he, technically, he didn't. He was muted, and he's muted again.
Okay. Well, at least, let's put it three to zero, and Bill abstained.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Agreed.
Okay. So the next order of business is, and I'll just kick it off, kick it over to Carrie, it's the PG application 2020-5 modification to existing site plan.
Yes, and before we start this, I think Ron, here comes Ron, so I just want to include him and let him get settled before we dive into this. So Ron, we... Thank you. Ron, are you there? Muted.
He doesn't have a good connection down there in the islands.
Right, he's still getting situated in his beach chair. So I guess I'll just get going. Um, okay, so as you read, there's a request for a modification to an existing site plan at 2341 Foxen Road, which relates to the Hidden Kitchen specifically. And they are looking to create an outdoor seating area in the parking lot in front of the existing restaurant, which is the Hidden Kitchen. So in your packets, uh, you should have, uh, you should have the application for a site plan modification, which again is just exterior work, um, which includes modifying two existing parking spaces and changing them into an outdoor seating area. So if I might, maybe I'll just, I might try and share my screen real quick. Um, okay. And... Can you all see that?
Yeah, that's the best way to do it, Carrie. Yep. You, you...
Okay. Okay, so again, the address is here, 2341 Foxen Road. The green area is the proposed outdoor seating area, and then we have, uh, the blue area, which are two existing parking spaces that will be converted to handicap parking spaces. The proposed hours of operation are 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, six days a week. And just as kind of a point of information, the applicant is also applying for a cafe permit to serve alcohol. Um, I'm just going to scroll down for more details. Can you all see this? Yes. Okay. Thank you. So again, it would be out in front of the Hidden Kitchen. If you're familiar with this plaza, there's, um, a mart at the end, an Arby's Quick Mart, farthest, um, to the end of the plaza, then Hidden Kitchen. In front of that, again, the two parking spaces that would be converted to outdoor seating. And then next to that is an existing Chinese restaurant, and then a massage, um, parlor at the end. Um, so that's the detail for the seating. They have the dimensions identified there, and then scrolling down, this is even more detail, showing the existing sidewalk, existing landscaping, the proposed location of four tables, and the different sizes, um, and then the proper distancing that is all the result of COVID-19. And then the last portion of this section just shows proposed bollards. Uh, each red dot is a proposed bollard, proposed to be 3.6 feet approximately separated from, or three and a half feet, I guess, from one another. Um, so I'll just leave this up, I guess, for now. I'm just want to kind of talk through a few other points. I think maybe this is the best screen to leave up while we talk. Um, so as with any application, I referred this to the appropriate department heads. Uh, one is the, the building official. He did, um, confirm that the proposed location of the handicap parking spaces is appropriate. Um, they do meet code, and the code just requires that handicap spaces be provided, and it's two spaces for this location. The distance from the building is appropriate. There is no distance minimum or maximum that handicap parking spaces have to be from a building. They just have to have an accessible path, so he was fine with this. Um, the fire marshal had concerns about protecting the patrons since seating would be provided in a parking area, but that's where, um, the applicant is proposing the bollards. So he also was, um, fine with this proposal, given that the protection would be through the bollards, or with, with bollards. Um, and I sent this over to the police, but I did not hear back, so I believe that they are okay with this. I don't see why they would have any concern. I was on a conference call with them, and they didn't express any concerns about this specific proposal. Um, East Shore Health has also reviewed this. They were fine with this proposal as well. As you all are aware, the COVID-19 situation, it's an ever-evolving scenario, but the East Shore Health is doing an excellent job of providing a checklist of items that restaurants have to comply with, and, um, they're actually going to be offering a talk, I believe, on Monday. And so that has specific guidelines that are separate from zoning, so definitely not this commission's concern, but I just wanted to make you aware of it. So that's where they'll be looking at the six-foot separation, and hand washing, and masks, and all of those necessary things. But for this evening, it's really to make this commission aware of the proposal. And, um, the reason why it had to come to this commission is because the applicant is looking for something more than just a 60 or 90-day temporary seating solution. They're looking for a longer-term, uh, solution for outdoor seating at their restaurant.
So are they looking for a permit, or just for as long as this happens?
Well, maybe I'll, I'll turn it over to, um, I don't know, I'll let John and Sandy and Dave decide who would like to speak first.
Sure, this is Sandy. Um, we're looking for a temporary, um, solution to the May 20th open date, where we're allowed to, to, um, serve people outside, but design it so that it also meets the permanent requirements for outdoor seating. You're in the town.
So I have a quick question. On, so on the, where you showed the seating, you had four tables. Um, so that's because of current social distancing. How many, uh, tables would you expect if this, if there was, um, let's say we go back to somewhat of normal, normalcy, how many, how many tables would you be able to fit in there? Or would you plan on doing?
Great question. Um, I think that that's going to be fluid, and it would, we would have to just comply with whatever the health department, I think it's going to be a long time before we're all sitting nice and cozy. So I'm guessing gradually the tables will move closer together, obviously with safe and comfortable for our patrons. Um, it's not a huge spot, but it would, I think for the, the future, it's really going to be in compliance with whatever the health department tells us is okay to do.
Thank you. And Carrie, does the, uh, 540 square feet that's outside, you add that, obviously, I mean, well, you, do we add that to the inside square footage to make, uh, to come up with a parking, number of parking spaces?
Um, another good question. So I would say no, because they're not occupying that. Under normal circumstances, yes, but because, um, I think that for now, the answer is no, we do not add it in. I think that the commission would reserve the right down the road, once things return to normal, to consider that. But there was just an executive order that was issued by the governor yesterday, and that actually enables commissions to relax parking requirements, um, as a result of COVID, and as a result of trying to get the economy up and running again. So I would say for this evening, no. Um, but again, however many months from now, returning back to normal, then yes, um, we can, the commission could reserve the right to look at parking and patron square footage.
So Harry brings up a good point, and I was actually going to ask this before he spoke, was, I think we have two distinctly different, uh, agendas on the table right now. I think we need to ask, are we going to look at temporary, or are we going to look at long-term tonight? Because like how we just... It's, 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 it's going to be night and day discussion.
Agreed.
And definitely, if, what, whenever things go back to normal, um, I think this would have to be looked at again, too, just because of the whole parking situation, and safety for parking, safety for the patrons, even in the bollard area, um, and seeing if that plaza has enough occupancy for parking spaces, uh, considering it's right off, uh, the state road there. Um, there's, there's going to be different questions, whether this is temporary or permanent.
Can, may I, may I, um, speak? This is Sandy.
Sure, Sandy.
So, um, I guess what I'm hearing is, in making it permanent, the concern would be the number of parking spots as one issue. Um, the, the thing that I'm asking that you consider is when we talked to the fire commissioner and the building commissioner, we made it clear that we would like to make this permanent, so what safety requirements would need to be met. And in doing this, there's 17 concrete boughs placed in, as well as a restaurant, um, quality fixed railing system. All of this, you know, we're looking at around $7,000 or $8,000, we're investing in making an extremely safe patio dining area. Um, I guess, you know, we're not just kind of throwing a couple of tables in there and asking you to, okay, that for seating, we're investing in the town and investing in this plan. And when we talked to Tom and Bert, we said, what if, if we, if this was a permanent thing, what would make you comfortable with it being safe? Um, and that's what we did. That they're putting in the bollards and things like that is not just putting a picnic table on the side of our building, that this is an investment in the town. And I think according to the plan that we have, based on the parking spots, the original site plan, we have way more than was even on there. So I don't think that the parking spots are going to be a concern, but I guess I'm trying to figure out what, you know, what, what the concerns were to be make it permanent, because it is such a huge financial investment at a time when, um, we have no income coming in, that it's not just, you know, that we want to make the investment now so that we can continue to do it.
So some concerns I have, and, you know, similarly with, if it's a, to discussion about temporary versus permanent, if it was a permanent, um, agenda tonight, I have questions about lighting, outside lighting. I have questions about, uh, we would need to have a discussion about, you know, outdoor, you know, if there's going to be music played.
No music.
Well, just let me finish. How big do we make it compared, to be fair to the businesses around it? Um, so the, just, and Carrie, you could jump in, because I don't know the regs about our outdoor seating spaces, but those are some of the thoughts that came to my mind about if we have a temporary discussion versus a permanent.
So the business around it, we are the only sit-down, um, establishment per our lease in that plaza. Um, there's no music, and, um, it's 7:00 PM, so we can certainly look at the lighting if that's something. We, we don't anticipate staying open that late, we just wanted to give ourselves a little leeway.
Um, and again...
Carrie, let me just, I know you're saying you might not, you know, your hours of operations, but if you're going for, I thought, I think I heard Carrie or somebody mentioned you're going to get your potential liquor license?
You know... Correct. Here, we serve brunch, and I guess, you know, the, the 30-somethings like the mimosa with their brunch.
So the thing that's, you know, like Trish has, Trish has mentioned, Alex, we, there's some concerns that we have, because if we allow something to one applicant, we can't say no to another one. That's why, I just want to make sure that, you know, as we go through this, that's why Trish is bringing up these points, and Alex, because once we do, we cannot tell somebody else, well, we don't like yours because of this little thing here. So that's why we have to be very careful with this. It's the first one we're doing. I mean, when I talked to Carrie originally, I thought a temporary solution would be the best thing so we could fully understand this, because whatever we do here affects everybody in the entire town. So that's why we got to be very, very careful, and we need to go methodically about this.
Um, so just to, to jump in, um, the executive order, again, that is trying to, that was just issued yesterday, is trying to fast-track, um, approval of outdoor seating areas for restaurants. It does not permit outdoor music. Um, and also, like I mentioned, it does relax the parking requirement, because it just makes sense. If you look at what they're proposing here, it's four tables, and I know it says six-top, I think, on two of them, but at least for now, I don't think you can have more than five people at a gathering. So just that being said, the likelihood that you would have more than four vehicles, um, coming and patronizing this, at this point anyway, hopefully it will be more, but I'm just saying realistically. Um, so four parking spaces, I would say, would be realistic under this scenario with COVID. If you look at our zoning regulations, under normal circumstances, it's one space per 50 square feet, which with this space is 20 by 27, it would be 540 square feet, so that would be 10 parking spaces. So just to show you, again, I think what would be needed is, for now, probably half of what would typically be required. Again, I hope that it's more for their sake, and maybe there'll be takeout, and, you know, it will start to increase their, um, their business. But just to show you how the regulations in this scenario are, are being relaxed significantly, for good reason. Um, and maybe any kind of approval for this outdoor seating, um, could state that it's for what's shown here, as our approvals always do, you know? So it's under these circumstances for these tables at this spacing. If they modify, or when they modify it, when we get back to normal business, then I, maybe we revisit it.
Now, Carrie, um, does the applicant currently do takeout, or when they, when they, uh, whatever happens with this, will they do takeout?
We, yeah. Takeout. We have always done takeout and dine-in.
Okay. So now the takeout, I'm assuming, would the people just wait in their car until their orders are done?
We have, we are in compliant with the regulations for takeout. We have a table set up outside. No one enters the restaurant. There's a six-foot distance between the person, that my staff and the person picking up. We have, um, contactless credit card reader, and they come pick it up. I'm not sure if that answers the question.
There's also a path for them away from the direction of the patio that they would, um, go to pick up, um, the food. So it wouldn't be, um, if you were concerned with the patio versus, say, entrance and egress, um, they would be, you know, separately. And the patio would be stepped off, and the little markers every six feet.
Carrie, what do our outdoor regulation, seating regulations say about, just one, what do they say? I guess that's my overall question, but more specifically, about size? I'm just not familiar with that reg we have.
So we really, for under restaurant, uh, the only time that it discusses outdoor seating is as it relates to the service of alcohol, but interestingly enough, it only relates to if you're within 500 feet of a school, park, playground, uh, or church.
So we don't have a reg on outdoor seating?
Correct.
So that's why this conversation is a little bit more important, if we, it was to be a permanent discussion.
But there are several, almost every eating establishment in the town of North Branford has some type of table, picnic tables set up for patrons to dine outside. Whether they provide waitress service to that, I do not know, but, um, if you drive around, almost every restaurant, the establishment in Northford, in North Branford, has some type of seating area outside.
The only one that I know of, um, and I don't, I haven't checked to see if this was permitted, is Duties. They have seating outside in their parking lot area with a fence, at least on one side, um, that I'm aware of. But I'm just trying to think of, and I know, um, Chat and Chew, which was good to go. Um, I'm going to stop sharing my screen, actually. Um, they have, they have, uh, they have picnic tables, but, um, I, I don't know of other locations.
Four picnic tables located actually physically in, in the parking lot. There's no designation between the parking area and the parking lot. Um, Dairy Queen offers, when they're in-season, um, benches, and the only barrier in between cars and the benches are trash cans. Um, there's a coffee shop that's no longer open, uh, attached to a grocery store, like in Northford, that has two picnic tables, um, that were at one point used for outdoor seating. The only barricade between the parking lot and those tables were the parking curves, and the, the handicap signs are down, and the picnic tables are dilapidated, and like literally falling apart. Um, there's a place in Branford, it used to be Henry David's Cafe, I don't think that that's relevant, but they have dining tables right on the edge of the sidewalk. Only thing protecting the diners is the sidewalk. So with ours, you know, we're, I think we're really kind of, um, setting the example and setting a very high bar with the bollards, with the railing. Uh, it's, I, I can't find anything like it. I've been driving around for the last few days, and even outside of North Branford, there's nothing with that level of safety.
And we, and we did have that discussion with both the fire marshal and the building inspector as well, uh, with regards to what other towns are doing. We did furnish that, curving, we went through the different scenarios, what would you be most comfortable with, and the discussion ended up with bollards as being the most comfortable, uh, from a safety standpoint, for doing something like this in a parking area on it. So we kind of went through that, um, quite a bit, um, with what other people are doing, and, you know, what would they be comfortable with.
Oh, and I think in talk, in talking with the fire marshal today, he had said, he just wanted something to protect the patrons, and I know that you guys are very conscious, conscientious of aesthetics, which is great for the town, and you didn't want jersey barriers, you know, from an aesthetic standpoint, even though that might be the most inexpensive option.
Well, if it's going to be temporary, I don't mind to jump in, but, uh, that might be something we may look at, Sandy.
Okay.
Technically, it won't be the best, but, uh, you know, if it's, if it's not going to be permanent, there's no sense in spending the kind of money we're going to spend on the bollards.
So I guess what's my hesitation from the town in making it permanent when, um, uh, you know, you've got, I guess I'm trying to make sense of, of people with picnic tables in, in the parking lot as a permanent outdoor dining versus, I guess, what's the hesitation in, in, in making this a permanent?
So I guess just one, one thinking point, this isn't my opposition against it, but I guess I just have a follow-up question. What is your, um, how, how busy is your parking lot typically, under normal circumstances? And I think that the question just goes to, what's the result of losing two parking spaces, and also having a busy parking lot?
Right now, we can lose 38 parking spaces.
We have, we have like two cars in at a time.
So...
Well, right, obviously, right now.
So that, that being said, so then, and it's, it's about a question you asked, but what you're out, really asking is how long will COVID persist, and as a business owner, you're trying to pivot and move on to something so the business can sustain itself at that location. There isn't enough square footage within the building, and just to do, you know, what we want to do, and this is an opportunity, the governor came out, said, "May 20th, you can do this, is a great idea. We need revenue to survive."
And I guess we're not here saying, we're not here saying parking is a problem for a restaurant. At our busiest, at our fullest, at our Sundays, parking's a problem. Um, Dave and I can carpool. The, the person that owns the building behind us, Jim, lets our employees park there if we need to on the weekends. Parking's not our problem, we're not coming to you with our parking issue. Our part, our problem is we need to look ahead for a permanent situation that we can spread out our diners, because no one's going back to sitting on top of each other.
Yeah, it's not going to happen. We're trying to transform the current business as we move forward, so that it survives, and that's really what the whole topic is. You know, Carrie, you mentioned the liquor license. The liquor license there for the same reason, it's transforming, transforming this business. It's not a bar, that's not the intent. It's, it's, it's another layer, to add revenue, to employ people, to hopefully hire more people, and to give back to community. I have people coming from all over the state here. I don't know how familiar everybody is with the Hidden Kitchen, but it's won awards for 12 years. It's the best, best in the state of Connecticut, best in the shoreline, Connecticut Magazine, all the different newspapers. There's write-ups every year on us. And I'm telling you right now, and, you know, we've talked about this, is that it is not looking good. It looks like we have to do something. And we approached this before everybody talked about patios and said, "Well, look, this is the last X amount of time, month, year, whatever. Let's do this." Summer's coming up, we know viruses don't like the sun, UVA, UVB, UVC, it's a good, it's a good miss. Let's do something permanent. Let's make it a destination for North Branford. People come from Wallingford, Murden, they come here now, we're going to come here if we have a patio. It's a great, it's a great idea.
We were just talking to Vaquille next door, and he said he benefits from people coming from all over the state to see us.
Agway benefits. The, the, every, every business in there, we give business to those people. We, we, we do, we work with them on social media, we, we talp their businesses, we go, go to this one for this. On it, every business owner tells me, "Thank you." And I'm telling you right now, my business right now needs to do something. Uh, and that's why we, April 13th and 14th, we started this episode, because we need to transform into something if we're going to survive.
So I have a few questions. Um, this is Alex speaking. Um, so with that standpoint, it goes back to, with what the May 20th happens, with phase one and everything, um, we're only looking at playing zoning. I'm not going into any kind of debate or talk on, on COVID, but COVID's always evolving. It seems like every day and every week, there's something new, and the states and the nation are doing something different. So I think that's one of the main concerns, why myself, I think, why my fellow commissioners, uh, would... So I think that's one of the main concerns why myself, I think why my fellow commissioners, uh, would possibly look, prefer to look at this as temporary because this situation is constantly evolving. And I don't think anyone right now could say where things are going to be in the fall or, or next year. Um, with that being said, um, I'm, I'm, I'm a little confused as are, are the applicants currently doing takeout right now? Or are you guys completely shut down right now?
We, on Thursday, we reo-, after fifty four days being completely closed, we reopened when we felt it was safe to do takeout in a safe fashion.
Okay.
And as far as permanent, temporary, um, I, I, I guess I'm confused as to what you meant with COVID and being, we don't know where it's going to do. If the health department comes down and says you can no longer seat outside because of COVID, we will a hundred percent comply and we have a good relationship with the health department. And we completely comply with all of the rules of the town and health department.
With, um, in regards to COVID, it's, um, the, the different COVID, uh, orders that came out, Carrie sent out with the phase one, phase two, everything that the health department's out and everything like that. Um, that's just, we, we, none of us know what's going to happen. Obviously everyone is going to comply with the, the, the health department and what the governor says and the state says. Um, but because there's so many unknowns, uh, playing zoning is trying to say, okay, we have this setup, uh, let me finish. We have this setup that you guys presented to us and you have the four. Um, and the governor has done this temporary o- order for doing outside seating. I think we're all in agreement. We, we want to entertain the, the, the temporary situation, um, because I think the, the current order that came out in the past few days ago, um, I think is for like sixty days and then you have the reevaluations. Um, I think for the short term, that's easier for us to evaluate tonight. And like how Carrie mentioned, maybe the Jersey barriers might be an easier and cheaper, uh, avenue to go. Um, because who, who knows what might happen?
So what's the hesitation? Permanent patio? What is your hesitation? It goes above and beyond any safety.
So to be honest with you, Sandy, if, 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 if we, if somebody came to us and started to, under nor- normal circumstances and said, you know, we want to do some outdoor seating, we want, we would probably have, we would probably have a public hearing for a text amendment to add that into our regulations.
Okay, so all of the businesses that have picnic tables in their parking lot have come to you and got permission for that?
Andy, I'm not, we're, we're planning zoning. We set the regulations. Then if there's, if there's concerns with, uh, people, uh, not, uh, meeting those regulations, then we have our zoning enforcement officer do that. He is completely separate from what we do. So if somebody came to us and said, we want to put in a permanent structure and I'm all for it. I'm, I'm all for maybe going to a permanent structure. But what I'm saying is that we would have went through a text amendment to put a regulation in there to talk about parking, lighting and all that. What we're trying to do in an hour is redesign everything, which is really hard for us to do because what happens here tonight happens at any, any restaurant or establishment. And once we do it once, we can't tell somebody, well, you know what? You're going to go to nine o'clock and your lighting's going to be, you know, or whatever it might be. We can't change that because we already set, we already set, we have an example of what we did. That's why we would normally do a, um, a, uh, a text amendment. So we can put a lot of this information there. May, you know, hours of operations, we would say maybe the, you know, it can only be the five o'clock at night, you know, on these, on the outdoor seating. I mean, different things like that goes into that thought process that we do. Again, the lighting, uh, we would review the parking even, you know, I mean, I have concerns about the parking. I, I see where you're putting it and I, I have, I have a little issue with, uh, the way the, you know, cars are coming in and different things like that, people crossing, uh, from the parking lot, from the seating area or vice versa. I have some current concerns on that.
So people have to cross the parking lot in order to enter the restaurant currently?
You can, you can walk out between two ballards to go across. If you put the map down.
No, you can't. No, 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 no.
It shows parking there.
There's a fence, there's a whole fence system inside the, inside the ballards. Sorry, I didn't, maybe we didn't explain that, that's, that's.
Because to me, all ballards are, are every three feet, but let me just continue.
So wait, no, no, we and a railing.
Is that what we're trying to do tonight is we're really trying to help you, but we're also have to look down the road. I'm, we, we don't know what's going to happen, but doesn't matter. You put your, when you put your, uh, permanent, you know, or permanent structure, that's there no matter what happens. You will use until somebody, like you said, cannot use it, you know, it tells you, you can't use it. But what I'm concerned about is that we're sending presents with this with very, very little insight. I mean, I, you know, I did, we did get some, you know, we, we did get the, uh, uh, fire marshal. We got the police department to look at, and that's a really good start and it's very important.
Who else would have a look at it?
What's that?
So we got the fire marshal, the police department, the health department, the building inspector, Carrie, who else would be involved?
I agree that it, 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 it meets a goo- good standards, but what we're saying is that there's more to it than that. There's more to it that we haven't even touched on. The lighting, what type of lighting, how much lighting across that, especially on Route eighty with the glare. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that we, we would normally be adding into this. Again, we're trying to, we're trying to do this very quickly and help you. But also we have to look at what happens down the road when somebody else comes. So I just want to make sure you understand that.
No, we, we certainly do and thank you very much for explaining it. Um, one thing, um, that is, I guess, maybe it's not understood by the drawings. There is an entire rail system of, that is, um, proposed inside the ballards. It's the same height of the ballards. It's by select, um, fencing. It's about a seven, eight thousand dollar rail system. That was to be put in, inside the ballards. The ballards will be on the outside perimeter of that fence. Um, that was part of the proposal on it. So if, if that did not come across or we did not discuss it, my apologies, but we did, we did show that.
Carrie has, uh, copies of the fence system and the manufacturer.
So I apologize if that was not, if we did not make a, um, that clear enough. I'm, I'm sorry about that. On it. So, and we, we totally understand, um, where you're coming from and we understand that this hasn't been done before in North Branford. And we are asking a lot of you at this time in terms of, you know, yes, um, we are asking for, you know, for us to all to take a, to, not a leap of faith, but to basically pivot. Um, we do, we do need to go to a permanent. Um, if we cannot do that, then I, you know, I would also entertain the idea from you is tell us what we need to do. How do I help you help us to move forward? What do we need to do to move this forward to get a permanent solution? Because what you pointed out, a ninety day solution, that's, and I appreciate that. I'm not anyway denigrating it. It's ninety days. What happens on ninety, day ninety one? What happens on day, you know, ninety two? What happens when that timeframe's up? Do we have to rip everything down? Whatever is out there, um, you know, the Jersey barriers, et cetera. What happens if the weather's nice and we want to go to September, October? And for the same reason, the COVID's there and the health department says, no, no dine ins.
And it's an investment. It's going to take more than one season.
And right now I can, I can make that investment ninety days, a hundred twenty days away. I don't know if I'm going to be able to make the investment.
Let me ask you a question. Let me ask the commissioner a quick question, Carrie. When, 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 when I was talking temporary, I was talking, I was talking about temporary until we can come up with a, a better, a, a, a more, um, detailed regulation. So let me, would this be possible if we granted a, uh, well, we don't have to grant anything really because they can just do it under the guidelines of what the state, correct? But the state put out, they can do outdoor seating. It sounds to me like they can.
Yeah. Well, so, so they, but it would be temporary if, if I approve it. If, if you guys approve it, um, especially with the ballards and something that's more permanent, it, you know, that it could last longer than ninety days. The executive order that came out the other day does allow, which is, this is where I think you were going, does allow for commissions to expedite text amendments. So that if we come up with a proposal for a text amendment, we don't have to have the notice requirement like we normally would. We can just have a public hearing and amend the text regarding outdoor seating.
All right.
Well, it sounds like we don't even have a text amendment and we'd be creating one, correct?
Correct. Well, that'd be the same thing. Yeah.
Do we?
Oh, I, I'm sure, my bad. Go ahead, Bill.
Bill, go ahead.
So it's a Zoom meeting, uh, public hearing?
Yes, which is what we're doing at our next meeting. Right.
Are there other requirements with Facebook? We talked about that, right? Other avenues other than Zoom or is it Zoom now? Has that been agreed to?
So Zoom, um, the last meeting was, um, through Zoom and Facebook Live as well. Tonight Totaka TV is participating, um, through Zoom. So this is still being broadcast on Facebook Live or Totaka TV's Facebook Live page. So they can, people can still comment and they can send emails in, um, prior to the meeting. And that's how we would be collecting. This, this, tonight is not a public hearing.
No, no, I know.
It's open to the public, but right.
So Carrie, huh, so if, if we decided we want to do a public, well, we'd have to put something together. Um,
But I guess just to kind of reiterate what the applicant was asking, um, what are you thinking of for a text amendment, um, relating to this scenario of what are some additional requirements that you're not getting now that you would be looking for in a text amendment?
I'm, oh, so I'm very concerned about size. So why do you business get this size? But then like up the street in Northford Center, there are several sit down places and they want the same size, but you can't fit them all if every restaurant wants that size. So I'm extremely concerned about size and it being equitable for businesses that are currently there or a business that might come in.
So this, I just read an article about this. This is a problem for restaurants in urban areas because they do not have the open space. And towns are shutting down roads and making different accommodations per site that you really can't say what's good. You know, it's going, everybody can have an outdoor patio without any accommodations made. Cities are actually shutting down streets for, um, traffic so that they can make patio areas for people. That, in Hartford's, so i- i- it's a huge issue for restaurants. But I think you can't penalize us for having room and then say, I, I don't know. I don't know any sit down.
Let me clarify what I'm saying. Let me clarify what I'm saying. So for example, Northford Center has Giovanni's. It has the bakery and it has a Chinese food place. So if Giovanni's wants to take up five spaces and we go ahead and say, okay, in the regs, you could take up five spaces. And now say there's only ten spaces. Um, and now the restaurant and the bakery want to take up five spaces as well. So that's fifteen spaces, but we only have ten. So again, that's a very crude example of where I'm coming from. But again, I'm concerned about how we determine, you know, just like you determine the number of parking by this, you know, per fifty foot square footage.
You're looking for.
To be equitable, how do you determine how much outdoor seating a restaurant gets?
Right.
And again, this applies to now for every business in town and for any businesses that might come in.
No, that, and I, I think that's
Go ahead.
But you're looking for an equitable template. And what I would, what I would say to you is that in case that you use, what I would, the way I would look at that is if you had a complex with two or three sit downs, you know, restaurants there, I'm not familiar with that particular one. But what I would hope would happen if they all wanted to do a outdoor seating patio, that they would all work together and say, what we would propose to zoning is a this deep by this width patio that we could either section share or however amongst us. In our case, we have one sit down restaurant in this complex. It's us on it. And we're, we're talking about two parking spaces within that complex. We have talked to our neighbors. They're all for it on it. And, and again, just, but one, only one sit down. That's the only one that is right now by lease that's allowed to, to do this.
And we have forty spaces in that lot currently, I believe, forty one spaces.
But, but your template may be that if a restaurant had, if you have a sit down restaurant and it's say, we'll take the two parking spot template if it works. And then there's three of them, maybe it's a six, six parking space or eight parking space, depending on the number of restaurants. But they would have to work together and share that space. If that makes sense.
Where I'm coming from, we're, we would be creating a regulation that has to apply to everyone and every situation. There might not be a neighbor who wants to say, okay, you can get five spaces and I'll take one. So that's just, again, to explain where we're coming from. The, the process of creating a template that is fair and equitable, no matter a positive situation or a hostile situation, that takes time to develop a permanent regulation for this type of situation.
I think that's the issue. Carrie, if, if the text amendment went through, is it a, uh, by right zoning reg? Or is it a special use permit each time a new applicant comes in? The example Trish, Trish just made, would that be the Northford Center? Would they have to come for a special use or is it just by right?
That would be up to you.
Yeah, yeah, so we'd have, we said that, okay. That's what I, all right, thank you.
Real quick to add on to Bill and Trish's, um, I think with what the governor just issued the other day and all the regulations that came out from the health department and, um, the stuff that Carrie has all, um, the occupancy, I think is stated there. I think it's like fifty percent occupancy.
Of the inside.
Right, yeah, so I think you might see similar, I, I think those might be the guidelines right now or what they're saying. So it goes to like what you're saying, Trish. It's like if someone says, well, I want this many people and their neighbor or someone in the same plaza that wants this. How do you handle that?
And I, I'm in support of temporary and, you know, following what the orders are coming out now, um, you know, because it's a desperate situation and, you know, other people flushed out these recommendations that just came out with similar expertise. So I'm, I'm in support of a temporary, but again, if you want it to go more permanent, I'm just explaining to you guys what it takes to come up with a permanent regulation.
So
John.
Agreed.
Hypothetically, if we wanted, so we went ahead and got the temporary and we wanted to say we want a permanent patio seating. Are, um, your approval on getting that would be dependent upon every restaurant in town having a fair shake at the right amount of land? Like our approval would depend on every sit down restaurant having the space they wanted for a patio? Like, so if, if, if the pizza place doesn't have space for put a patio and no one gets a patio?
No, 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 no. For, for me, personally, for me, it would give us, it would give us time to craft a, a meaningful regulation and spend time and put some effort behind it to understand the implications and things like that. We're, we're kind of forced now to like be very agile, which we want to be for you, but you know, it also sets precedent and stuff. I think we, we typically take time for everyone's benefit and kind of make sure it's a me, we go through a meaningful process that we get to a, an, an end result that everyone can agree to. I just think we're, this is just, so for me personally, I think temporary, I, I'm all in favor of. I mean, I think it makes a lot of sense. It's, I, I think to everyone's point, it's, it's just the permanency is what you're talking.
Okay, and so I'm trying to hedge.
Time normally, that's all.
Trying to hedge, like I'd like to put the ballards in and do it as safely as possible because I think that's the right way to do it. And I want it to look nice. I guess I'm kind of hedging. So if I do it the right way and then the aesthetic way and the thing that reflects how we do business, um, is that the right step in the permanent? And it, and the other issues would be like lighting or parking and things like that. But from a safety standpoint and, and, and taking that area, we're on the right track.
I guess what she's asking for is, is we don't want to have, well, I shouldn't say it that way.
Yeah.
We're trying not to do things twice, if that's possible, uh, from a, from a cost standpoint.
I mean, do our, our ballards permanent structures?
Bert asked that we get concrete ballards that actually are drilled into the parking lot. This is, this will keep a car from barreling into the seating area or, you know. So it's the most safest.
Anybody, anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I would, I've never owned a business. I don't know what it takes, but if, I would be concerned about putting in permanent structures, cause if, if we create a, a, a regulation that now says, well, your space could be smaller or bigger, well, now you're going to have to redo those. I mean, Carrie, I defer to your expertise on that thought I just had, but I would be concerned.
Oh, yeah.
I think if they, if they drill, if they drill in, you just drill them out, fill them and pound some asphalt in there. It's probably permanent, like when you're drilling something, permanent means it's substantial. It's, it's not something that you could, I can't just go, I can't go next to it and push it over, you know? It's going to be more substantial, if a better word, not.
Sandy, I'll, I'll, I'll just kind of make it kind of clear. We, we can't really give you guidance on that. What we want to do is we want to make this work for you. But whether you want to do something permanent or temporary, because the, the order from the, from the state is temporary. And we have to do our thing and I would hate for you to go ahead and do something. And then all of a sudden, because of square footage or some other things that we build a regulation around, that you have to make a change. I, I hope that, that doesn't occur, but we really can't give you guidance on that. I mean, I, you're on the right track, but what, to, we can't give you really guidance in, 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 in what direction to go. You know, right now, we, temporary, I think, you know, we're, you don't even have to come to us for temporary. I mean, you've got, you, I mean, we're going to have anybody that comes to us, get in, uh, get the fire marshal, um, the police department and, uh, the zoning enforcement officer, or I mean, I'm sorry, east shore kind of sign off. But.
So in order to do temporary, we have to put in the ballards. That's what Bert said.
Well, he said, just to clarify, cause so he did say protect the patron. So unlike I had originally said, I think the, the ballards do look the nicest or, you know, the most aesthetic. Um, but I'm, I'm interested, John, as the property owner and just someone who knows construction, do you have any thoughts of what you've seen used for some kind of a patron protection or barrier?
Ballards aren't going to be temporary. Ballards are, are permanent. You know, so if you're going to go temporary, you know, Jersey barriers or something like that to stop it, that's all you can do. You know, I mean, somebody in the parking lot, they're not going to be driving 50 miles an hour. You know, so I, I don't know. I don't, I don't, I think, I think the Jersey barriers would probably be the best way. Temporarily, to be the cheapest, quickest. It won't be the aesthetically best way to do it, but I don't know. Sandy, how do you feel about it?
Um, I don't like where they look. I mean, I think that, I think we're, I think that, you know, I think we're better than that. That's not the type of, uh, restaurant we are. Uh, the type, the, the clientele we bring to North Branford that, you know, and, and I think that, you know, we're offering up a, a solution, um, and really exceeding any safety standpoints that no one in town does. Everybody's got a picnic table out in the parking lot and that's okay.
Right.
And we're trying to provide a safe seating environment and for the long term and invest in the town and, um,
well, there's a difference between like I got my coffee or I got my ice cream and I'm sitting versus outdoor seating being an extension of the indoors where there's service and waiters and waitresses going back and forth, that, forth. That's very different. Especially if there's the service of alcohol. That's very different than just grab your quick snack and just sitting.
The point of the ballards isn't to protect the long-term sitter. It's to protect any sitter in our parking lot. Whether you're sitting for two minutes, eating an ice cream cone or have a cup of coffee or you're sitting for an hour having an omelet, the protection should be there. It's not a quick, oh, I'm just having a cup of coffee so I can sit in the parking lot. Anytime a patron is sitting in a parking lot, it's my opinion, they should be protected from traffic. And it does not depend on what they're eating.
I, I agree. If there's, if there's, if there's, uh, if there's outdoor seating or, um, or things like that, then well, the zoning enforcement officer would, he's the one that would have to, um, uh, you know, be involved in that.
I'm just saying compared to, you know, what the expectations that are set right now in the town this far exceeds it in say, for safety. And I'm not sure what the, I, I'm not sure what, I, I feel like at this point you should say from a safety standpoint, this would exceed anything we would want on a permanent basis. We can talk about the lighting. I mean, whether it's shining and we're not putting up spotlight. And that, you know, the lighting, we can talk about that. The parking space, there's ample parking. I'm not worried about the parking. I guess I'm trying to get what is the hesitation in? We want to go forward and make sure we're not doing it twice. And we want to make sure we can stay in North Branford. If we don't have a viable business, we can't stay in North Branford.
So I'm going to reiterate what I think almost every commissioner has stated is there's, there's a, there's a difference between the temporary and the permanent. And like a ma- many variables that Harry mentioned, Trish mentioned, Bill mentioned, um, when we look at one particular application, when there's going to be a text amendment, we have to consider all possible options that occur in that zone for any kind of those businesses that it could apply to. As, as Harry mentioned, a few of the other commissioners have mentioned, once we make a decision, there's no going back. So I, I, I think as Carrie mentioned, as Harry mentioned, um, the, the, the temporary aspects, Carrie could take care of her, herself per ordinance issue of the governor. The more permanent aspects, um, I think everyone here, uh, that has mentioned on the commission, we, we need more time and we need to look at stuff in writing, um, that would apply then to all these businesses. Uh, we, we, we want to be able to solve this tonight for the permanent solution. Uh, and anyone could correct me if I'm wrong on the commission of that.
I agree.
You can't make the decision even if you wanted to. Correct?
For permanent?
Yes. That's what I hear.
I, I, I'll, I'll speak for myself, but no, for permanent, uh, we wouldn't be able to tonight because there's too many unknown variables.
Right.
So can you clarify for us, currently there are no, no guidelines for permanent outdoor seating for North Branford?
Correct.
So there's no guidelines at all? For permanent outdoor seating?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's, on a sec, another question for you. So, um, if we were to do the temporary, um, and we also would like to do a permanent, um, would it be possible then to request that a, that you would consider whatever regulations, et cetera, that we had talked about and mentioned, lighting, et cetera? Um, what we would need to do to apply for a permanent going forward at some point in time? Because we would like to do both.
Oh, yeah. No, that's the whole idea. So that's what we would do.
That's what I thought. Yeah. I think that makes a lot of sense. You get the temporary and then you work during that time, you work towards the permanent. Right. I think so. I, and, and I think that would, and if, if there was, you know, and the reason I'm asking that is for my, I have a, um, we had planned and I think I had a $7,000 railing system inside. If it's a, if it's, if it's going to be a, um, temporary, it really doesn't make sense for us to invest that money at this point in time. So we'll put that on hold. And then if we can move forward at some point with you in terms of applying for a permanent and what, what we need to do, we'd be happy to do it as soon as possible because we do want to do this. It's a brilliant idea. It's, it, it really is. And we, and it would add so much more to this town. And I think it'd be a home run.
What's your perceived timeline for?
Well, let's put it this way, it'll be less than 90 days.
Oh, great.
We need to fast track this one. I mean, I think from what all the commissioners have said, I mean, I'll give you some, just some of the things that we're going to be looking at. And I'll, I'll start working with Carrie, I mean, as early as, uh, you know, the, uh, early next week. But square footage, we have to look at square footage, what you have inside, how seating capacity, uh, make parking, uh, reduce parking. I mean, and you've done a lot of this. So you've given us some ideas of how we can move this forward. So our goal would be to move this quickly. Um, but we have to do it methodically as well. And as soon as we have this type of regulation, you know, it, it is going to be a public hearing. So we would expect, you know, we would definitely, you know, you, you would be notified or we could notify you about a public hearing on this. So you could come in and take a, you know, take a look at what's drafted. Also, you know, because you're, you're, you're an advocate for all the restaurants and businesses in our town. So you can take that and, 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 and look through whatever we write. We can look at it. You can comment on it as other restaurant owners may be able to do. And we could come up something that works for everybody, not, you know, especially for you, but also what's, will, will work for the town. So.
So I will just mention, um, later on this evening's agenda, under 5A, I have discussion regarding policy and procedures relating to COVID-19 and outdoor seating at restaurants and other establishments. So I would expect that we could start to formulate some of what we would like to see for the text amendment. And then we can schedule it for the next meeting that you all feel comfortable having it at. Like I said, we have a, a public hearing scheduled for next Thursday, the 21st. And then our next regularly scheduled meeting would be June 4th. Um, but because of the executive order, we don't have to comply with the 60-day, you know, notice and two notices in the paper. We can just put it on the agenda and, and act on it after we have a public hearing.
Is there anything that we could work on? Um, I, I already noted lighting and parking. Is there anything? I, I feel like that I have the safety covered. Is there any other areas we can research in the meantime that would be of concern or that you would be interested in knowing about?
Uh, so. Oh, go ahead, Carrie.
So one thought that I have is, um, so the space that you're looking at is a 20 by 27 area. It's 540 square feet. So it's, in listening to the commissioner's talk, it sounds like there's some kind of formula. I don't know what that would look like for, I, I don't know what it, what it is. If it's per plaza, per restaurant. I don't where footage is now for inside, but maybe it's a percentage of your outdoor seating compared to your indoor seating. It's just, that's just a thought. I, I don't know. That's just one example. I don't know if that's the direction that you want to go in. Um, I don't know what duties breakout is of indoor versus outdoor seating. Um, another place that I thought of while you all were talking is Roses Orchard. They have outdoor seating. They do have a low wall. Um, I don't know. It seems like it's pretty crash, kind of like a crash barrier. It's not ballards. It's not Jersey barrier, but it is a little wall that's between the parking lot and the seating area. So, but I don't know what their.
Sorry.
I don't know what their, uh, ratio is of outdoor seating versus indoor seating there.
So did they just put that seating up? Did Roses and Duties just put their outdoor patio up? And with no, with no permission from you guys?
No, both, both of those seating, I was not here when either one of those seedings were installed. They've been there for, I don't know how long.
I'm just trying to figure it, because I was under the assumption that right now, we don't currently have any regulations for outdoor seating. So the ones that are there, like those, did they just put them up? Like, how did that work?
The, the ones with duties go off the state because of the, the liquor permit. So duties would fall underneath east shore and the liquor permit, um, and roses, I'm not sure on.
Okay.
Well, and I do know, so like Pacilio's is no, is closed, but they had a outdoor seating and that did come before this commission and that was reviewed. It was reviewed as part of the special permit, but there was no set standards for what they had to comply with. The regulation that.
Looking for in that when you, I'm just trying to like, I want to follow the rules. So what kinds of things were you looking for with their approval?
So with Pacilio's, because they had a liquor permit and they were within the 500 feet of a school, park, playground, church. They had to, the regulation has that the, um, outdoor seating has to be surrounded by solid screening approved by the commission, but you don't fall into that category. Um, and, um, I'm trying to think of other locations that might, so.
Uh, Northford Center, I think does.
Northford Center might, right, right. So maybe Giovanni's, if they wanted to serve alcohol outside, they might have to have full screening. So their outdoor seating might look a little bit different than what yours would, even though you both serve alcohol, but they're within a certain distance of a church. Um.
So just one, one point of clarification, so I understand. With regards to permit, um, granted on it, for us to get a, um, a permit approval for 90, 120 days, whatever, what do we need to do, um, to get that since we've gone down this?
You've already, you've already submitted everything that I would need. So I can approve it as the town planner, zoning enforcement officer, or planning and zoning administrator, I should say.
But the one caveat would be is that we wouldn't want ballards now, right? We would want, we had, we had talked about, what is it? Um, Jersey barriers, I believe I heard.
Right. And I would, I would probably, yeah, I would, I would phrase your, your permit as being kind of up to you. So I would just say, um, a barrier, uh, approved by the fire marshal. And, and he seemed okay with anything that would stop a vehicle. It doesn't have to be.
But what does duties have? What does duties have? Can we do something like that?
I think they, I haven't been back there. I think they just have a fence, right? Yeah. They're right next door.
Can we just, can we just put a wooden fence? It'll look nice.
Oh, no, no, I know. Cause you need something that is, uh, is protective. You, you, a wooden fence wouldn't be doing that.
Well, not a wooden, I mean, it, it would be, it would be, uh, we could concrete it into the ground.
That, I mean, I, I think I'm going to have to go with, uh, with, with the fire, with the fire marshal and the police department.
Okay.
If, I mean, if they, I mean, if you want to run one of those scenarios by them and they're okay with it, then, you know, we can approve, Carrie can approve it. But I, I, I don't, I don't want to say what can be used and what can't be used.
Okay.
Right.
Just trying to make it look nice aesthetically.
Right, right.
I know when a lot of the, um, urban environments, we're putting in those parklets, you know, where they were making parking spots, an extension of their, uh, restaurant. Um, there might be ideas for, um, cause you know, they were on main roads. There might be ideas for more aesthetic pleasing barriers from that whole world. I know nothing about construction, but I just know that this, that came to my mind with having the seating in the parking, parking lot.
But I would go back if, if, if Carrie's going to approve it. I think it's either Jersey barriers or ballards right now. If it's anything else, then I would have to go back through, um, fire, fire marshal, police department and whoever else it might be. So if you, if anything's going to change, I would go through Carrie on that.
That's it? And then will somebody who would let us know about applying for the permanent, I guess would be the next step.
We, we, you would, when we, um,
I can let you know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
When we get to the point when there's a public hearing, we, you know, we would hope you, we would know, at least try to notify as many people as we can.
Right. So that, that's, um, before you apply for the permanent, we would definitely want your input on the regulation for what that would include. For what the outdoor seating would, would require.
Okay. And I guess, um, so I'm, I'm just kind of looking at a timeframe. Um, if we just want to go a, go ahead with the permanent, when, when would that hearing be and all that? How soon would that all happen? Or we, or we don't, we don't know. But that would be at the end of the summer?
Oh, no, no, no.
Regulation would have to be passed first.
I'm hoping, I would be hoping that it, I mean, this is, I don't think, I, I, we can't do it for the next meeting. But I would hope to have it in June, hopefully the first meeting in June. I mean, I know that's aggressive, but I mean, we're not looking at the end of summer. We're looking in, you know, June, maybe July latest.
Well, do you think, I mean, depending on how the discussion goes this evening, we, I haven't posted the meeting for the 21st. I'm not trying to make it a super long meeting. We have two other public hearings, but throw it on there, but we could talk about it in a little bit if you want to maul it over that.
I think June would be, give us. I think June would be, give us, you know, two more weeks after that. So we can put, you know, we can really think about and put it together. So we don't have to drag this on. You know, we can, but I mean, the 21st could be awful, awful tough.
The only thing is just, I'm just trying to play out for their benefit, the timeline of, so if the regulation is reviewed on June 4th and even approved that evening, then they, as soon as they could apply would be the second meeting in June.
Right. Carrie, for regular applications, are those expedited with the governor's order or regular, um, applications are, are just normal?
Um, those are expedited as well. So like it, for any scenario, especially this one that falls under the COVID situation, the, um, the timelines are not, um, they don't have to be adhered to for under COVID. So just as a, as another example, for next week's public hearing, those two do not relate to COVID. We have to comply with the timeline, but we don't have to comply with the same notice requirements. So there's, um, flexibility is the point.
I guess, I, I appreciate that, Carrie, and I appreciate you.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, I appreciate you trying to move it along. I guess that I'm asking you all to look at, that we're trying to reinvent, repivot our business. And I know that this isn't typically how the process would go and that we're asking you to move it along quicker. Um, we are trying to save our business. We are trying to stay, stay in North Bramford. These are unprecedented times. We have to look at a new way of doing business. And, you know, coming from our side, we are trying to make this decision. We are trying to invest in it. We love being in North Bramford. And we're asking you, if you can help us just by moving it along a little quicker. And it, it does mean changing how you things a little bit in the, from the standpoint of the town. Um, but I'm asking you to look at it from our standpoint of, of business basically shut down and what we need to do to reopen and make a living, not just scrape by, but you know, make a living and pay our bills. And then it might mean moving things along or doing things a little bit different on the, 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 the town part to help us do that.
Thank you.
Clearly understood. Thank you for that comment. So what we will do is, uh, we're going to have another discussion later on about this, but what you, we can do is, uh, we, as soon as we know what date we plan on having that public hearing, we'll make sure you're notified.
Okay. And in the meantime, if there's issues you would like us to research, I hope by what you've seen and what we presented to Carrie, that this isn't just willy nilly. We research, we want to do what's right. We want to do what's safe. So if you have issues that come up, I would prefer you let us know and we'll research and do our very best to comply. If we know ahead of time what you want to see.
Even like the type of materials, choices, why porous versus non-porous, wood versus steel. We looked at all that stuff. So.
Our tables are wire mesh because they can be sanitized and there's airflow. It's not untreated wood that you can't sanitize. Every step of the process we have researched. My husband's an engineer. We're, we're not just approaching this willy nilly. So if there's things you want us to look into ahead of time, so that it meets all your criteria, we're happy to do that. We take pride in what I do, we do, and this is our reputation.
So I also, I, I just wanted to also mention that I'll follow up with you tomorrow, Sandy, but, um, I can approve, um, what you've submitted as far as the location for the seating. Um, and I'll send out a letter to you tomorrow, just saying that so that you can at least get going. I know you're, you're anxious to get open for May 20th to have outdoor seating. So you could have some kind of a barrier that, um, isn't a big investment and is more temporary.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Well done.
Thank you.
Wait, I think so. Bye, guys. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Bye.
Okay. So, uh, Carrie, you want to go on to the next one, which is the, um, uh, 824 referral?
Yes. So this is from the town council regarding the town's acceptance of Farmington Drive, which is in Bridgewater Estates off of Middletown Avenue. And in your packet, uh, I think I'm also going to try and share my screen real quick. Uh, one second. Just use other things. Uh, let's see here. Okay. Can you all see that?
Yep.
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 So this is the referral from, um, the town manager to you all. Um, on April 7th, the town council referred the acceptance of Farmington Drive and the associated drainage and bridge easements constructed as part of the Shant's Farm subdivision, which is now known as Bridgewater Estates to the commission for its review under section 824 referral. And I'll go over here. This is what was originally sent from the town engineer to the town manager. Um, I'll just read through this so that you understand the, um, extent of the roadway. So the developer of the Shant's Farm subdivision is offering Farmington Drive, a 4,000 plus or minus foot long road, including a 70 foot bridge, which connects to Middletown Avenue, Route 17, to the town for acceptance in accordance with section 201-13 of the Town Road Ordinance. Farmington Drive has been constructed to the satisfaction of the town engineer in accordance with the approved subdivision plans. As-built mylar record drawings of the road and related improvements have been received and filed with this office. A warranty deed for the road and drainage easements for off-site drainage improvements have been received and approved by the town attorney's office. The town attorney will be receiving the originals of these documents, which will be filed on their land records once the town accepts the road. Um, so this is what is.
Can I just get what this means in layman's terms?
So if you, go ahead. Do you want to explain?
Yeah.
So on the, the screen, the image that you see now, this is the Shant's, uh, Farm subdivision, um, which you all are familiar with. So there's 34 lots. The developer obviously owned originally this whole parcel, which was then subdivided, since now at the point where all of the lots have been sold. And so the developer is now turning over the rights of the road to the town. So it will be the town road. Um, so the, the Farmington Drive will now be under the town's responsibility for maintenance and upkeep and improvements if necessary, but also the drainage system as well. And because it's a town expenditure and it's relating to roads, that's where it falls under the 824 referral to you all from a planning and zoning perspective.
Is this what usually happens with big, big developments like this? I'm assuming. That's what I took away.
Yes. So this is what typically happens, especially when the lots have been sold to individuals. So, uh, hi, who knows what the timeline is on the next, uh, big development in town is, but 50 Fowler Road off of Route 22 is before Wetlands right now. But that is a, um, not a subdivision. There's, they're proposing over 200 units, but that roadway will be maintained by the association.
Privately.
So that won't be turned over. So it will remain private, if that makes sense. But that's a good question.
No, it, it does. Cause I, I read this and I can, like, I can use my critical thinking and figure out what this is, but again, just, like, okay, what does all this fancy language mean?
Right, right. And just for your information, it again is the roadway that the town would be accepting and the drainage system. There is a large parcel of land you'll see here, open space, that actually went to the land trust. So there's large areas, you know, kind of surrounding the parcels that are owned by the land trust, which is great. So that's.
Technically now, before, if we agreed to accept the roadway, um, people normally couldn't use that roadway unless they own the parcels down there, right? Or no?
Uh, yeah, I think that's probably true.
I mean, there was nothing, there was nothing saying, there was nothing saying you can use those roads. I mean, usually there would be something that says, you know, um, uh, you know, if you, no trespassing or whatever. Cause I, I, I run in there and I've ridden my bike in there and other people have done the same.
Okay.
All right. Now I could have been done, I, I could have been doing it illegally, not knowing. All right. But it's a great place to run. It's got some good hills.
All right. So, um, so for the motion, um, it would just be a positive referral, um, to the town council. Someone wants to make that motion. In favor of accepting the road, I should say.
We, we better wait. Trish was on the move.
I know. Well, I was going to try to do it off the top. I had to turn my light on. It's getting dark.
All right.
I make a motion for the positive referral or acceptance.
Um.
Referral.
Referral for, to, to have the town accept the road.
I make a motion of a positive referral to have the town accept the, the road, Farmington Drive.
Yes.
Yep.
In the Bridgewater Estates.
And that was Trish Mays who made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And that's Alex DeFrancesco. Please say your name. All right. So, uh, for a vote, we'll just do it, uh, we'll go through each person. Uh, Trish?
Uh, why I support it, I.
No, 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 no. Just, no, no.
Oh, I'm just, yes.
Just say yes.
Trisha Mays is a yes.
Okay. Alex?
Alex is a yes.
Bill?
There's Ron.
There's Ron.
Bill Galenji is a yes. Ron, hey.
Ron.
Are you wearing a blanket, Ron?
I've been wondering where he was the whole night. Yes. Bill Galenji, yes.
Okay. Ron. Oh, Ron.
He's giving me a thumbs up.
What's that?
I mean, he's giving a thumbs up. I don't know how technically sound that is for the new world we live in, but.
Ron, are you on mute?
No, I don't think he has a microphone.
Oh, now he's on mute. Okay. Well, Ron, we're going to have to do an, an extension for Ron. Cause we can't hear you, Ron, at all. But you are off mute.
I don't see his mouth move.
Oh, nope. I thought I heard a beep.
Okay. And then here is a yes. So that will be, uh, four to zero, and we'll say, Ron abstained on that. How's that?
Yeah, to be fair with this.
Throwing up his arms. I don't know, Ron, what kind of operation you running over there?
I wonder if your headphones, if they don't have a mic and you plug them in, it somehow disengaged your computer mic. I don't know. I, I'm not technologically sound at all.
That's what I would, yes, that's my guess.
That's a slot.
There you go.
Yes.
Now I hear you.
Ron, Ron, you are yay or nay on the motion?
I vote yes.
Okay. So Ron's a yay that passes five to zero.
I can sleep restful tonight.
I got bad speakers on this, uh, laptop. That's why I was using a headset, but I didn't reel it off the mic.
Yeah.
Is that a napkin over your camera? Move the napkin.
No, it's the beach towel.
It's just, yeah, it's a beach towel.
Oh, you probably cover it like to prevent someone from hacking in. It's a piece of paper, but flip it back.
Uh, this is the guy that hasn't had a haircut in what, three months?
Ron, you could just kill the video in the lower left hand.
Wait, wait, wait.
In the lower left-hand corner, it says video. You could just click it. It'll go off.
Uh-oh, Alex is cracking himself up.
Right.
I find it hilarious. Ron was down in the islands complaining about not getting a haircut. I look like I came down from the mountains.
Okay. Should we go to 5A?
Yeah.
Okay. So this is the discussion regarding policy and procedures relating to COVID-19 and outdoor seating at restaurants and other establishments. Um, so in your packet, uh, there was the, I believe, information, and I don't have it up on my screen right now, information about what the governor released, um, for outdoor seating requirements per the COVID-19 world that we live in. Um, and so I just included that more as a FYI of how things are changing. A lot of it relates more to health department rules and regulations than zoning. But I think this is important, as you all alluded to in the first application, to talk now about what we might want to look at for a text amendment, because we can expedite it. I, I do think it is important, obviously, to work with all of the businesses, as I feel like you always do, but just to try and expedite things. And, um, I have heard from two other restaurants who would like some kind of outdoor seating. And although we need to treat everyone the same, every, every restaurant is different. So we do have a lot of restaurants in town that are part of a plaza. And so the majority don't have a lawn area or outdoor seating. They have just a parking lot. And under the current circumstances, I think that it is true, the traffic is light. It, it's low, but, um, hopefully that will change. I don't know how long that will take. No one does, but we need to just take that into account. Because if, if the seating is permanent, that's great. It will activate the block, activate the parking lot from like a planning perspective, which is always a goal. But then what do you do? It's not like there are a ton of sidewalks that people can walk to these restaurants in town. It's just, just not how the town was built. So people are going to drive to the restaurant and then where did they park? And then do they start, end up parking on the, the side, the side streets? And I don't know. I, I'm not trying to be a naysayer, but I think it's to all of your points. We need to just think through how much of the outdoor seating do, do we want to permit and what does it look like?
According to the, the, the guidelines.
Okay, it goes like you just said.
It, it's up to 50%. Cause they, they can have outdoor capacity up to 50%. So.
Well, right now.
Somebody might be, somebody might think that that means if your square foot, you, you have 2,000 square feet for a restaurant, that you can go outdoors and put a thousand square feet. That's one thing we have to look at is the maximum size. You know, you know, I mean, we have front facing.
But it's, it's 50% of the seating capacity.
What's that? Right. But that the seating.
Does that mean numbers?
It's 50% of the seating capacity.
Right. So, right. But the seating capacity is based on the square footage, correct?
Right.
Right. So that's what I'm saying.
What they normally have inside.
2,000 feet.
Yeah.
You can say, I want a thousand square feet outside. It's 50%. Well, it should be more because you have to have social distancing.
Yeah.
Well, either way, it doesn't matter. It's semantics.
Exactly.
Square footage is like.
No, but I, I think, yeah, I, I think the six foot distancing is going to sep, is going to reduce the amount of area, obviously that they can, uh, or sorry, it will increase, obviously, the amount of area that they need to occupy, but.
Right.
It comes down to, that's why I wanted to get John Castle vitro's take on this, because he's the property owner. Um, so, you know, like in, in Northford, if you have Giovanni's, the bakery, Amanda's Deli, Chinese restaurant, uh, the Italian club, everyone wanting outdoor seating, how is that going to work?
Well, Carrie, that's a great point. Carrie, that's a great point. Cause one thing I thought that we should have, uh, is, is in, uh, before the approval process even starts, that any application that comes through to us, the initial site plan and the final site plan have to be signed off by the owner of the property. I think that's, I think that has to be done because I, I, we don't want somebody to come to us. I mean, like duties comes to us, one thing, he owns the property. But if, if these people came without the owner knowing, we approve and they build it. And then suddenly the owner's like, no, you can't do that. I, I don't want to get in the, I, you know, how did you approve something that I didn't allow, I wasn't allowing my property? So I think to protect us, that's one thing we need to look at is some kind of, um, sign, you know, a sign off from the, the, the property owner. Uh, also the square footage. We really have to look at that. You know, um, I don't know if it'd be a sliding scale. Maybe we do it like a, uh, like we do for, um, the in-law apartments where it's up to 600 square feet. I mean, I don't know what the, the magic. I mean, I don't know what the the magic number is, but maybe we do something like that. Uh, we we do, uh, you know, maybe 600 square feet, maybe 750, and or whatever it might be, and let them figure it out.
Right, well, and that's where part of me feels like it should be up to the tenants and landlord to fi, to figure out, we just set a maximum for the parcel, so one comparable situation in our regs is um the signage requirements, so per parcel, say in like a business zone, they are allowed, I forget the exact amount, but say like 64 square feet of signage. Now, if you're the first tenant in, and you take up that whole signage, okay, then lucky you, but the next guy who comes in is going to miss out, but that's up to the landlord to figure out. So maybe it's a percentage of something, I don't know exactly what yet, per parcel.
I think it's a percentage of like, like what they did with the the COVID requirements, it's gotta be a percentage of the number of people you have seated in, or the square footage that you sit people in, but you also I think we might have to build in a situation where um, if we're sharing a storefront with multiple businesses, and everybody's minimum is bigger than that shared space, I'm wondering if we might have to say put in an extra step, or if it's a, you know, special permit, we have to have a discussion that, well, when it's shared space, you got, it has to be shared equally, um, or somehow like the the reg for a a plaza is going to be different than like Rose Orchard, who has a ton of land around them.
Right, and they'd be, Trish, that'd be up to the the owner, the tenant, we don't need to get into that, just, you know what I mean? Let the owner decide what the breakdown should be, you know, if if if, you know.
Oh!
You know what I'm saying? Let's let let them figure that, we should, let's not, because otherwise we'll we'll rack our heads, and I don't know if we're, you know, trying to figure out how much space for each person, and you know, because one thing like I'm concerned of is like a storefront, okay? So when you storefront, you look at the width, like, you know, from left to right, when you're looking at the store, and then, and they have, they might, somebody might have a lot of space out in front, so it might work out good for, you know, the, like a strip mall, where it's kind of like that, but what if you have a long, narrow uh, uh, you know, business, so it's 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 like a, like, think of like a bar when you walk in, it's really narrow, but you can have hundreds and hundreds of square feet, but then you go in front, when you use that number of square footage, now you're gonna go, you're gonna expand past the um, you know, like the boundaries of your of your section of the building in 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 that strip mall, so that's why I think we should leave that up to the um the landowners, or the, or who owns these buildings to decide.
The other thing, um, we, I don't know if we want to encourage it or not, but plazas may look at doing like a courtyard setup too, so if you have one outdoor seating area that would service multiple restaurants, that's another option that they could come up with. Um, so, and I'm happy to look at what Branford has, maybe other towns, you know, in the area, to see what they have for their outdoor seating, I know Guilford has a lot of outdoor seating, um, and I'm trying to think, in Guilford, I can't think of one restaurant on Route 1 that has, I feel like they have outdoor seating kind of near their parking area, but I don't know that it's in the parking area. But the challenge with Guilford is that I feel like they have more space for like sidewalk seating, which we don't have.
Right.
One of my other points is, you know, if multiple um storefronts have outdoor seating, you know, we would need to make sure that we, there's space in between, however the building is set up, and you access it, there's space in between each outdoor seating for people to walk through, that way you don't have to go all the way around, and you're not walking through customers.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And you still need.
Trish, something like that, we could actually put.
Along the doors.
What's with Millie?
I have no idea, I haven't picked it up.
Hello?
Go ahead, Harry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought somebody just joined, no, like, that could be.
I think Ron's having a conversation.
If we had, if you want to add like the, like the ballards, if those are the strongest thing with some kind of fencing around it, like they, like um uh, Dave and Sandy said, we can make that mandatory, that the ballards gotta be, all the ballards gotta be put into the ground, and it's gotta be fencing, so like you said, people can't walk out. So that's something to think about, keep that in mind as we go through this, we can say we want the safest uh, 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 materials used, and that would, could be a ballard, I mean, we could find out from whoever, but a ballard with a fencing, so I agree with you on that.
It'd be there, it could also be um, like how Carrie mentioned, Roses, they have that stone wall there, that's aesthetically pleasing more than a ballard, but it's a solid stone wall. So 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 like, they they might have options, but you still want to make sure it's it's safe for the patrons.
Yeah, you don't want anybody walking through.
Yeah.
But, I mean, does everybody agree that this is a good idea?
Yes.
Okay, I still have concerns about it, because I don't, I I'm not, I'm not in the middle of a parking, in a dri, in the middle of a park, parking area. I still gotta.
I mean, maybe it's, oh, go ahead, Alex.
Uh, the one concern I see, and I'm confused with this, with the governor's order.
Yeah.
And what I see is for um, it goes for letting restaurants do temporary outside seating. And if the restaurant already had um, a liquor permit for their establishment, they don't have to go back to DCP and get the outside seating one, they're they're waiving that, so they have it. So if restaurants don't normally serve alcohol, would they still have to go through this to get that? I I think the answer is yes, they'd still have to go get that in general, but taking into account like how Trish you mentioned earlier, and Harry you mentioned earlier, if people are going to be consuming alcohol, or there are going to be later hours of operation in these areas, you want to make sure they're safe, but also appropriately lit, and make sure everything flows smoothly, uh, because of those variables.
Yeah, yep.
Um, I, I'm not, because maybe it's from living in New York City, um, I'm hmm, not as concerned with safety, and I I I think the ballards are super safe, because when you think about how in New York City, people are packed in the sidewalks, and people pull up to park, and there are no barriers to protect the people on the sidewalk. Um, so I think we're going above and beyond, so that's why I'm not as nervous, because we're going above and beyond to keep people safe. And you know, when those um, in New Haven, when it was popular for, you know, just a few years ago, to put in the outdoor seating in parking spaces, those did not have strong, at least from my eye, I couldn't, I don't have x-ray vision, I don't know what was in the different um, contained, but like, some of them just were, looked, they were just wood platforms, and they did not look very safe, and they're on Chapel Street, and people are driving down Chapel Street at the regular speed, so I think in terms of the fact that we're having people put up barriers, I feel even that much more comfortable with the outdoor seating and parking lots.
Good, good thought.
Um, I just had a thought about, um, I know this is probably between tenant and landlord, but I'm assuming, yes, we make this reg, but a landlord could say, no, I could be wrong, I don't know insurance or anything, but I'm assuming having outdoor parking lot seating is going to increase landlords' insurances, no? So I think it's a good point that we need to get their permission, or an applicant needs to have their permission.
Right.
Good point, yep.
Well, Harry, that's why you mentioned, landlords gotta sign off on this before they come see us, because it's then then it's on the owner of the land, it's not on us.
Yeah, I think we need one, the the landlords, a a a, uh, sign off on the initial site plan, and then sign off on the final site plan too, because things may change, you know, we might ask for something, so we need to get his approval in both cases. Uh, Ron or Bill, anything? Ron, you're on mute, just to let you know. There he is.
Yeah, there I go, um, I tend to agree with Trish in that, uh, you know, like I have rental properties, and I require my tenants to have renters insurance. So, we don't really want to get into it, it's a responsibility of the uh the owner of the building to require his tenants to have the appropriate insurance to cover them. So, I don't think we should get into insurance and requirements, just as simple, you need a write-off from the the property owner.
Right, yep.
Question, do we have to put anything in our reg, or should we, you know, some of the, like at Northford Center, in front of one of the I could be wrong, but in front of one of the places that you could potentially have a sit-down out in the parking lot, you know, the the parking spaces are eaten up, there's holes, is it just a given that? You know, if a landlord agrees to this, and a tenant wants to do it, they have to fix that, or should we be, should that be in the reg somehow, that whether concrete or you're building a platform, it has to be safe, or is that inherent in, what are you doing this?
Well, I think, I think that might fall under the building official, so, or or health department, so the other thing that I've learned through this is that the health department would prefer outseating to be on a paved surface. And that's not for us to necessarily require, I don't think, but it just, you know, because I I don't know if they prefer it or they require it, but I I know in talking with them, that's what they that's what I've heard them say, that they're looking for a paved surface for food service, anyway.
And then Carrie, they look at our regular, uh, when we do uh, something like this, they'll take a look at it, right? You sure?
Yes, yes.
They can opine on that, so we'll find out if they want to, you know, put, you know, requirement, or good to, good to have.
Yep, yep.
Bill, do you have anything?
No, sorry, it's on mute.
Are you watching the baseball game?
Yep.
What baseball game?
The Korean, Korean League.
I watched the Korean League, I watched.
Korean League, yeah.
Uh, the final score was 11-10, it was a walk-off homerun in the 10th inning, it was so exciting. I didn't have my glasses on, I go, wow, they got fans in the stands. I said, I can't believe that, I said, I never fucking do it.
Right?
It was cardboard cutouts of people in the stands.
Exactly, yep.
It was the funniest thing ever.
Oh, my gosh.
I just had to say that, but yeah, it cracked me up, I was watching, actually, I made a bet with somebody in the fifth inning. Um, a dollar bet, I I lost, so. Anyhow, what else?
Real quick on this permit saying, um, how would this impact then, going forward as new regulations come about uh, from the the governor, may maybe indoor seating starts opening up, different capacities, or whatever it might be, um just thinking of like the parking situation in general, and now you need to make sure you accommodate everyone that could be inside, plus outside.
I need to pay attention to that.
And, because, um, I I saw the commissioner of Ag today, uh, he stopped by, and how it got mentioned, like, some of the cities are closing down streets, um, just allow people to have this outside venues, um, the the out-outdoor, uh, patios, I should say. And um, for for the cities, that's okay, but like, as we mentioned before, like for like our town and other uh, rural towns, you you can't shut down Route 22 or Route 80 and just put out patios there, so, or people park on the side of those roads, because there's no longer parking inside. And that's the dilemma that we're going to be facing with this, is hopefully we can actually get back to normal, um, and these businesses are doing successful, and they're doing at full capacity, now what are we looking at?
Well, if they do it temporarily, they have two options, if they do it temporarily, when the regulation, you know, I mean, I think, I I think we're gonna have to put something in the regulation about this as well, but once you go to full season, uh, full capacity down the road, that means you either have to break down your temporary structure, or come to the town for a a permit. Okay, so right now, if they want, somebody wants to do it temporarily, they go to Carrie, and Carrie can sign off on it. If they want to do it permanent, they're gonna have to follow the regulation we have, so that's, they're, we're gonna, may have to separate those two.
And and that's what I mean.
As far as what the state's doing, that whatever the state does has no impact on our, the regulation that we're about to write. The regulation we're about to write has nothing to do about COVID-19, it it won't have any effect, the only thing is, if there's seating or occupancy issues, uh, then that would have an effect on any business, whether it's indoor or outdoor, uh, if if that's what the state says. But if it's temporary, they can just go by the, whatever the state has, but if they're gonna go permanent, and we do put a, uh, uh, we do a text amendment, we put it in there, then they'll have to follow um, our text amendment, if that makes sense.
Parking, outdoor seating should be somehow calculated into the parking regs.
Oh, yeah, you, we we have to make sure that whatever whatever uh property we're looking at, that one, we have enough parking. Okay, so let's, we gotta break this into two things, right now, remember, if it's temporary, they can basically just go to Carrie, and we're just gonna have to kind of, you know, she'll have to work stuff out. But if we're talking about permanent, we have to look at the number of parking spaces required for that place, if if if, let's just say, if there's 70, uh, based on the square footage, there's 70 parking places needed, and you want to take 10 out of some place, you know, I it it won't work, you gotta have the parking for it. You know what I mean? So that's, you know, or you can just go temporary. If if it, if 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 you can't fit the parking spaces according to what we need, then you can just do it as a temporary structure, and take it down when it opens back up.
Correct, that's what I meant before with the parking.
Does this make sense, you know, between the temporary and the permanent?
Yeah, and just reading from the executive order, just to reiterate what you all are saying, so one of the, and I'll forward this to you too, but it talks about, and that's what I'm looking at, the minimum parking lifted to facilitate outdoor activities. So it says, "Any covered law required a minimum number of parking spaces or prohibiting outdoor activities from taking place in parking lots is suspended to the extent required to permit such outdoor activities alone or in conjunction with any other authorized activity, including any activity required to enable the response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Any covered law prohibiting outdoor activities from taking place in on-street parking spaces is modified to allow the ZEO uh, to permit this activity consistent with the requirements of this order," so it's all relating back to the pandemic, you know, so again, to reiterate what Harry's saying, it's all temporary. So I think we just.
Another, another thought would be seeing how this, I, this outside seating is on private property. Um, thinking of Nordford Center as opposed to other parts of town, um, some of the uh, islands lend itself to, if they put a patio out there, uh, can a fire truck get in there? So, it would, it would have to be.
Can't make the difference.
We're not, we're not talking apples and apples, each, each scenario is completely different, because, like I said, think about the the center in Nordford, and think about the other applicants, um, some places lend itself well to outdoor seating, and some do not. So, how do we address saying, you know, you got these big permanent islands that the fire truck can't swing around now that you have outside seating?
Well, I think we keep it.
Very good question, Ron, and what will, no matter if it's temporary or permanent, our fire marshal, our police department, and Carrie and zoning enforcement officer are all gonna look at and sign off it, even if it's temporary, you know, you know, our fire trucks and police have to be able to access whatever they need to access, so so if it's temporary, they, it'll it'll circulate, if it's part of the permanent, and there's a regulation in place, we, it will be approved like any uh, site plan is, uh, where it goes for referral and comments to town engineer, to the fire marshal, police department, east shore, and on and on and on, so, yeah, because that is very important. to the fire marshal, police department, east shore, and on and on and on. So, yeah, because that is very important that our emergency services have access and approve of things like this.
Um, so that was interesting to learn about the handicap parking law that it really just talks about accessibility versus, you know, distance and where. Just as like more of an ethical, you know, thought I had, I don't know the setup where like, uh, you know, hidden kitchen is, but you know, they moved handicap parking to the side. One thought I had that I totally forgot to mention was, okay, so you moved it to the side, and this is for again, I'm I'm picturing a plaza that like, you know, the entire sidewalk is now, um, you know, the front is blocked, so you have to come in from the side. But say on that side, that handicap has to come in. It's, um, you know, the sidewalk's raised there, but say not in front. And then now that person say with the walker can't come in the side, so now they have to walk around possibly an outdoor seating area to then go in between. Again, I know the law, now that I learned it's loose, but could just, we always keep that in our mind about, you know, handicap parking that sure if you put it over here, but there's a lip, you know, maybe that person might not, the landlord might not fix the lip. So let's like truly put it in a place where it's accessible and that's somebody doesn't have to travel a further distance.
That should go with the building code.
When we look at a site plan, like, uh, let's, and and I know what you're referring to, but when we look at a site plan, we can, you know, make those comments on there. If somebody has, you know, that, if somebody has that uh uh handicap, uh, I I was just watching Alex spin out of a picture and come back. But anyhow, uh, if anybody has like a handicap parking space at someplace where you don't like it and where we don't like it, we Yeah, I mean, temporarily, you know, we can't really, I mean, I mean, really, the state is basically saying, do really what you want, and we have very little control over Carrie.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if Carrie, if that's, if if that's the, you know, the rule that you can approve everything, or is it almost like a free for all? But either way, at least we're doing our due diligence on the temporary stuff. But when we get permanent stuff, Trish, it it, and I agree with you, I'm not a fan where that uh handicap parking space was a across the road, you know, I mean, across the building. So we can bring that up to use anybody who brings a site plan like that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna show you my skills. Blow your mind. Ready?
I just want to, Carrie, you got one of the biggest home offices I've ever seen.
I have been I have been succumb to the seasonal room. Um, so it's either really warm or really cold. But anyway, so this is the street view
Yeah.
of where the hidden kitchen is, right? So it does look like, which I wasn't sure of, but this confirms it, that that is handicap accessible.
Right.
Right.
So this is where they were going to put the spaces. They still have to add the proper
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's fair. That was my only concern and just always like moving forward. Sometimes on these sides, there can be a lip because of how the ground is.
Carrie, zoom into that again, because you have the yellow baller there and you have all the shrubs there.
Mm hmm.
Okay, I didn't even realize there were shrubs there before.
Yeah, so and then they're proposing to put it.
Oh, Carrie, you just hit the car.
Ah, look out.
You drive on the wrong side of the road.
Get out of the street. Get out of the street.
So in these two spots, right?
Okay.
So I mean, and Trish, this is a perfect example, like if somebody wanted to put uh, so let, I mean, I'm gonna throw, so if somebody wanted to do outdoor seating, like on this one, it's 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 not too bad. There's, you know, I mean, you could be within the the hidden kitchen area, but but what if they had a smaller, like say it was only one window wide?
Correct.
If it went really deep, they would have, they would have to go in front of somebody else's buildings, you know what I mean? So that's why we really, you know, like the square footage, I think is really important to add, you know?
The the Northford Center Plaza is the perfect example of that because there's multiple businesses there and each one frontage is a different width.
Yeah.
Right. Now, I mean, what would be really cool is that when you had stuff like that, you like, you would have like a community place where you can go and sit, but you can order from wherever you wanted to.
Mm hmm.
You know, I mean, like a courtyard, but it would be pretty cool to say, you know, I want to sit outside there and you just go take, you take a table, table that's available. I mean, that would be really neat that you could do that. So, you know, there'd be, you know, all the business, but we'll have to kind of
Unfortunately, I think we have to defer to East Shore on that because I don't think they'd
Right.
Allow a communal.
Agreed. Definitely not now. I know, because we
But a courtyard's communal, like when you go into a mall, you have six different businesses selling food and then they have courtyard setting. Uh, and and the landlord who owns the mall is the one responsible for cleaning it. It's not the Mc, you know, the McDonald's person or whatever. So I mean, I mean, you know, but whatever the case, I don't know if it ever happened. Let's just worry about the square footage and trying to get something on paper here.
So just so I could, Harry, to your point, like I understood your point at the beginning of this conversation, but now I'm losing it. So we would say to a landlord, like in a plaza situation, any situation, we would say to the landlord who has a how are we approaching this? That the landlord has this building full of, let's just say, restaurants and they each have, um, you know, different square footage on the inside. We would say, okay, whatever reg we came up with, this is what your building's allowed. So you landlord, you divvy up this amount you're allowed? Or that?
I don't know if we would do that, Trish, or just say that for any business and I I I mean, that could be one, that's one option. That is one option.
Okay.
Other option is for any business that would want outdoor seating, you could only have X amount of square footage up to six hundred square feet, like a max. So if if you have four businesses there, each one can only have six hundred square feet, let's say. I'm just gonna throw and use a number.
Okay.
So they can, each one can only have six hundred square feet. Then it's up to him, it would be up to that uh the owner of the property to decide if, you know, if if Harry Dulae wanted to put in outdoor seating, you know, am I, can I get up to, can I, how much can I get? It's up to him to approve it.
Okay.
Square footage, you know what I mean? He has to sign off on the site plan. He has to figure it out because in some cases that six hundred square feet might go in front of another business.
Yeah.
The other business might not be happy about that. We should stay out of that. That's landlord issues. You know, so that's, that's where I was kind of driving at with that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it does. It sounds like I, if, yeah, you could come from a couple of different angles.
Yeah. Yeah, because that's my biggest concern is that when you talk about the square footage, is when you start going in front of another bill, uh, another business. I don't think another business would prefer that. Like if hidden kitchen was gonna, you know, or I don't want to say hidden kitchen. If a, if 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 my business was gonna go outdoor seating and I'm gonna, that my outdoor seating is gonna cover the other two uh businesses on the side of me, those two businesses aren't, could be too happy.
So we would, we would stay out of it and not put something in our regs about like, you get this, but you gotta stay in front of your
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could discuss it. We could discuss anything.
Yeah, it sounds like, yeah.
Because it may not always be right to have it in front of the restaurant. You know, the placement may be better off to the side.
Right.
For safety's sake.
Yeah, yeah. So Well, let me ask you, so Carrie, when's, when's the next meeting?
Next Thursday.
I mean,
Is that a sigh of happiness? That sounded like, ah, you mean yay?
I was trying to get to June and you're telling me, well, we could maybe squeeze it on the twenty first. So I mean, I'll take a stab at it with you. Do you think we could do the twenty first?
Um, what, like?
A public hearing. I mean, Carrie, we don't, the regulations are kind of waived. I mean, I mean, as far as I think, or should we, or should we go for the June fourth, Carrie? I'll leave that up to you.
Yeah, I think it
Next week. Or at least have a
Follow up discussion.
Discussion on it.
That sounds good. Let's have a follow up discussion. Let's not put it on there for a public hearing.
Right.
Uh, let's start to like hash out what we want to have in the text amendment. I think that's a good idea because we could always have a special meeting and meet three weeks in a row or four weeks in a row and meet on the twenty eighth as well. Um, that might not be a bad idea.
I I think we have to expedite this because, you know, a lot of the restaurants in town are hurting.
Yeah.
And
Yes.
You know, we can, we can tie this up in red tape and, you know, take a year, but you know, the the restaurants are still hurting.
Yeah.
So what I'll do, so I'm going to, I was planning on posting the agenda for next week, tomorrow, and working with Lynn to do that. I have that pretty much set because it's, there's a text amendment for um the one that Eddie Lawton was proposing regarding increasing the number of building or units in a building. Um, I think from five to six, and then the number of bedrooms from one to two, and then also allowing for septic as opposed to sewer connections. And then there's, Tilcon has a map zoning amendment to rezone two of their parcels from residential to industrial. Um, so that should be a lot of time. I think that will take up a good amount of time, both of those, but I'll work on putting something together. And maybe
We definitely have to expedite, but also we do have to be fair to the public to weigh in. So I mean, I wouldn't mind even doing a public hearing on, you know, May twenty eighth. I think a week is too soon. One, to even get something substantial together, but also to
Do we actually do a public hearing in a special meeting?
Oh, can you do a public?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, we just have to, we just have to advertise in advance.
Yeah.
You know, and like we have to get something substantial enough together for like the public to be able to have details to comment on and maybe a week's too soon, but maybe the twenty eighth. And we don't have to wait till the fourth. I don't know. It's just to try to balance, yes, expedite, but yes, also keep public interest.
Good point.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. And then on Monday, as I mentioned, East Shore, I think is going to be having a conference call the businesses in town to talk about what they need to do from their perspective, but they're also including the town side. So building health, I mean, sorry, building zoning, um, fire marshal, police. So I can get a better feel from their questions as to what they're looking for and who may be interested. Like I said, I've been contacted, hidden kitchen, um, Chat and Chew, and then a new Mexican restaurant that hasn't even opened yet. Um, that's trying to have outdoor seating um at Five Foxen Road where the whole enchilada was.
Oh, down by the East Haven Line?
East Haven Line, yeah.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, yeah.
Um, so I think, Carrie, the biggest thing, and if you can look at, I mean, the square footage is, I think that the
The biggest.
Is the biggest thing in the room right now because we go all over the place on that.
And I'll look at other towns too and see what they have.
See what they're coming up with. I like to treat it like an in-law apartment, like where we could say, uh, you know, you know, up to a certain square footage, but you know, uh,
Right.
Let's see what the others have. Like other towns have like sidewalks. So they can, and they have expanded sidewalks, so you can have tables outside, you know, a few of them. This is a whole ballgame, you know, this is a whole, this is a whole different thing.
The other thing to think about too, and I guess this falls underneath building code and then um, East Shore would be um for for the permanent seating, uh, it goes into uh restroom facilities. Because then you're increasing the the numbers, so that actually might impact some of these restaurants uh, when they get back to fully functional too.
Right, well, and I'll look at what East Shore um, what their formula is for seating area. And maybe number of seats dictates the number of bathrooms. That may be a building code thing as well. I'm not sure. But I'll look at that. That's a good
You mentioned that the East Shore is gonna be on a call tomorrow or?
Monday.
On Monday?
Mm hmm.
I mean, are you gonna be on that call?
Yes.
Okay, so you can, maybe they'll have something on the square footage or the number of seating. Well, they already did tells. It's fifty percent.
Right.
Yep, yep.
Right, but I think going forward, because because we want to think about non-COVID days.
Yeah.
So can I just learn what, so how, so seating capacities already determined by square footage? Like the number of bodies you can see in your restaurant is already determined by square footage? Yes or no?
In our regulations?
Yeah, in our regs.
Yes.
Okay.
So well, I, the building code, fire code dictate what that capacity is?
Okay, so it's, we have like three spokes weighing into the seating capacity. Just, I just don't know that. That's why I'm just like, where does this number of seating capacity come up? So it's building code, fire
East Shore, right, and health department.
And the bathrooms. Right, okay, because you know, I don't like my arbitrary numbers, so that's good to know.
I might not be a hundred percent right on this, but I think you you take the square footage of your floor, you subtract, I believe, the um, uh, cooking area
Yeah.
and maybe the bar area too. I'm not positive about the bar area. I'm not sure that, how that goes. And then you get your square footage and then it's so many patrons per square footage. And then the square footage and the patrons drives the parking, the number of parking spaces.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so it's the area that actually the patrons can occupy typically.
All right.
Um, and I don't know about anybody else. I didn't know outdoor seating with alcohol had to be screened. But if there's no alcohol, I gotta move because I think my kids are left out.
Well, Trish, that's only the town regulation with the churches and the schools.
If there's no alcohol outside, I'm, I don't know about anybody else, but I'm not concerned about there being screening or barriers between outside business seating areas. I don't know if anybody else was. I'm not concerned about that.
What do you mean, like the fencing around duties?
Meaning like if if um, you know, like here is this outdoor seating and then like an arm's length away, just saying is like another outdoor seating. I don't think
Oh, I got you. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't think there's a a a screen or fake shrubs between outdoor seating. It could just be besides the rules for the alcohol.
Yeah.
I don't know if anybody thought, because you know, yeah, you want aesthetically pleasing, but also, again, I'm just thinking about how it is in New York City, like people just like to sit outside. They, I feel like enough people don't care if they have fancy fake shrubs around them. I could be wrong, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Mm hmm.
And also, one thing I would like everybody to think about for next meeting is hours of operations. Because we we talk about outdoor seating in, well, well, hours of operation and also what zones we should allow this in. Because
Larry, you're looking at businesses that are restaurants and that's all business zone right now?
I don't know. Chat and Chew is
True.
I I I'm just saying, I don't know every property, but Carrie, Chat and Chew residential?
Yes.
Yeah, so
Chat and Chew, I thought, I thought the front where Chat and Chew is is business.
No.
And the backside was residential where the house was.
No, it's all residential and same with duties, actually. All is residential.
So we gotta be very, that's even gonna throw more of a kinker in because there's a, you know, hours of operation, residential area. I mean, I'm just gonna throw it out, a residential area. You might not want outdoor, I mean, it's like outdoor entertainment. So we gotta think about that.
Yeah.
About that. So
Okay.
Yep. Anything else?
That was everything.
All right. Carrie, you 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 got the last thing on the meeting is the um receipts and scheduling.
Right, so those are the public, two public hearings uh next Thursday.
Right.
What are they for again?
A zone, a a text amendment for the business zone, talking about residential and the business zone, increasing the number of units permitted per building and the number of bedrooms per unit. And then the septic versus sewer And then the septic versus sewer connection. And then a text, uh, sorry, a zone change proposal from Tilcon to rezone their parcels. Uh, to the north of where they're quarrying currently.
Can we do Tilcon first?
Oh, that's right. Uh, sure.
Okay. I, I hope that would go faster than the other one. The other one's a little more complex. And on the other one, um, Eddie Law, Eddie Lawton's, uh.
Mm-hmm.
Did E- East Shore give us any information back yet?
Uh, no, not yet. I will reach out to them.
Okay. All right. All right, if there's nothing else, Ron, would you like to make a motion?
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Excellent. I motion, we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who was that?
Alex.
Tr- Trish?
No, that was authored, but Alex seconded it.
Know that. I'm asking you for your vote.
What? Yes, we can adjourn. Yeah, Trisha Mason says yes. Keep forgetting.
Bill? Bill is gone? Oh, he's, he's muted.
He's muted.
Alex?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So we are adjourned with, and I don't know, maybe, maybe Bill doesn't want to adjourn. We might have to wait, but anyhow.
Stay on, Carrie, transfer him as the host. Oh, gosh, right, exactly.
All right, everybody. Well, thank you very much.
Good night.
We'll talk to everybody next week.
Everybody. Thank you.
All right, be safe.